Good evening and welcome to the Millcrick Township School District Committee meetings for Monday, the August 4th, 2025. First meeting this evening will be the Instructions Student Services Committee, followed by the Personnel Policy Committee meeting, including with the Finance and Operations Committee. There will be also a committee of the whole meeting this evening following the committee meetings. While we encourage the public to attend in person, all meetings will be streamed live on YouTube and be recorded for future viewing purposes. You can also view this evening's agendas as well as several additional informational items at our website, www.mtsd.org. In addition, please visit us and like us on our Facebook page, Millcrick Township School District. During each of the committee meetings, we provide you opportunity for Millcrick Township presidents and taxpayers to ask questions regarding any item listed on the agenda for the committee meetings. The same protocols apply to all individuals who wish to address the board. Before asking a question, please indicate which kind of item you are asking about. Committee chairperson will review this at the appropriate time during their committee meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. We appreciate your input and feedback. First committee meeting is Instructions Student Services, Ms. Mitchell.
Thank you. Item 1.01, roll call. Ms. Wenchel?
Here.
Ms. Philback?
Here.
Ms. Nussham?
Here.
1.02, approval of the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 2.01, the Instruction and Student Services Committee meeting minutes of June 9. I'd like to make a motion to accept those minutes. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have eight action items this evening. I'd like to start, please, with item 3.02. 3.02 is the McGraw-Hill World History and Geography Extension Contract. Because that's listed on the COW meeting agenda later this evening, I'd like to start with that item. It's a three-year agreement for world history materials and resources for grades nine and 10. The cost is $28,438.26. And because we'd like to get the materials in the hands of teachers before the start of the school year, it has, I'd like to make a motion to move it to the committee of the whole meeting later this evening. You have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion about that item? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great. Let me backtrack and go to 3.01, Project Search Agreement of Roles and Responsibilities. This agreement defines the roles and responsibilities of each partner in the Project Search program. The agreement is effective for one year, the '25-'26 school year, and will automatically renew one-year terms for five years, provided there are no changes by any of the agreement partners. Item 3.03, the Gannon Articulation Agreement. This agreement stipulates that Gannon University will transfer advanced placement-level coursework completed concurrently from McDowell High School for those students wishing to enroll at Gannon University within two years of high school graduation. The eligible courses are listed in the attachment related to English, Mathematics, Social Studies, Science, Foreign Languages, and Education. Next four items are curriculum for courses that were piloted last year. 3.04 is Building Trades I Curriculum. 3.05 is the Environmental Agriculture and Landscaping Curriculum. 3.06, Fundamentals of Cybersecurity Curriculum. And 3.07, the Introduction to Computer Science Curriculum. The final item is 3.08, the J.S. Wilson ATSI Plan. Would you like to speak to that?
Thank you. Yeah. So, as you probably remember, this is a plan that we were on last year. ATSI stands for Additional Targeted Support and Improvement, and that's a designation that the PA Department of Education extends to school districts when a particular subgroup or population of students is underperforming. And so, in our case at J.S. Wilson, what's been identified is our English Language Learners, and they scored a 33.9% on their ELA assessments in '23-'24, and they scored a 19.4% on their math assessment. So, see, those are beneath the benchmark indicators that the state would like to see. So, when that happens, you go on a one-year plan, and that is your ATSI plan. The plan causes you, of course, to look deeply at your systems. What are the strengths? What are the challenges? What is working well in various content areas? What are challenges in various content areas? And then, you do have to summarize goals to address specifically those two subgroups in their performance, along with action steps there. So, the three goals that have been identified by the J.S. Wilson team, and of course, this is a school-wide team, but it also involves district level administrators, and this involves IU personnel as well. The three goals that have been identified are to implement the positive behavioral intervention supports in J.S. Wilson this year fully. So, this will be the first year of the full implementation of that plan, which, of course, is to get kids to school excited, motivated, and behaving in the way that we want them to, so that they can learn their best, which brings us to goal two and three. The second goal is to increase the English Language Learner's ELA performance from the previous year. And number three is to show growth in the English Language Learner's math performance from the previous year. The ELA performance has already increased a little bit. We want to continue that. The math performance actually dipped from '22-'23 to ' '23-'24. So, of course, we need to turn that around and get that growth. The full plan is posted online already. We would like public feedback, feedback from anybody. We'll have that posted throughout the month of August for 30 days. You'll see that then at the end of the month for your approval, which then we submit to the PA Department of Education. Again, it's a one-year plan, so the state will look at the performance measures at the end of this year to determine whether or not we would have to do that again for next year, or if we're done.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to move 3.01 and 3.03 through 3.08 to the regular meeting at the end of the month. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion about any of those items?
I have one quick question. So, 3.08, does it list the former principal because of it was in '23-'24, or should it list the new current principal?
It does list the former principal, and there's also an IU member who has departed. Since they were the ones that worked on the plan, we would submit it with their names. But, of course, all of the communications that we have with the IU or with the state from now on will include the real people, current people.
Thank you. Any additional questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The informational items, there are three of them this evening. 4.01 is the iXL presentation.
I'm gonna bring that video up here for you. iXL, I'm sure, you know, most of you know, certainly our parents are familiar with this tool that we enlisted this year across multiple grade levels. And what we've seen from the student end and from the parent end is a lot of positive feedback. It's a fact fluency software, but it is very sophisticated. It ties directly to the diagnostic assessments that we do with students on a periodic basis. So, for example, our map testing. But, the iXL program itself is extremely diagnostic, and therefore, of course, is very specific in the material that teachers can assign to students to continue their learning, from a basic fluency and computation standpoint, up through much more deeper analysis. So, we did get some feedback from some of our students and our administrators that we'd like to share with you here.
Find a good platform that would give us a lot of good data that's really engaging for students, and really have not found it until we came across iXL. We use it primarily for math and English Language Arts. Of course, in the elementary world, especially in the older grades, you know, math has always been a struggle. Also, iXL is directly correlated with our map testing that we do. That's the measure of academic performance. So, I think it's all integrated now, which I'm really excited about. I don't like a lot of different things that we are doing that has no connection with each other. But now, when you talk about iXL, Envision, Map, they're all correlated and actually work in tandem. We're working smarter, not harder. We've done three competitions in the building this year. The last one was pretty intense. We did a play on March Madness, the basketball tournament, where all the homerooms, I put them in brackets, and it was homeroom against homeroom, and we had four different rounds. We used both math and ELA, and the competition got really intense there at the end. But we finally had a winner. We actually, as a building, we bought a traveling trophy that went to the winning homeroom. So, the kids just love winning that trophy, and that stays with the homeroom until our next competition. But, I mean, as you see in the graphs here beside me, three spikes, that was our competition. So, like I said, the kids really got into it, and also the teachers as well. We really love iXL. We're looking forward to seeing our first and second graders get the benefits of iXL. I think we're just scratching the surface of what iXL can do. So, looking forward to digging even deeper into it and seeing what else we can use it for.
Being the first year that this is iXL, I'm in a good position as an interventionist. I can help support the classroom teachers, but I myself can use it as an interventionist. So, with the classroom teachers, we use it to help differentiate their instruction. So, it's a tool that we have that we can go to right away to help differentiate with the learners. We can have activities for kids at the higher level, at level, and then the below-grade level. So, I can pull flexible groups on a daily basis based on reports that we get from iXL. They are able to work at their own level, and they seem more motivated. They don't have that defeatist attitude. It's like we have that growth mindset. And even on the program itself, when they access it, the very bottom, they love the button if it says something like "not ready yet." So, they can click on a button and go even one level below or above, wherever they are, to meet their needs. This is my 30th year in education, and I have to honestly say, this program in and of itself is my most favorite program I've been able to use from both points of view. From the teacher's point of view, because the reports are accessible immediately, and the data is right there. And then, from the student's point of view, they don't have to sit and wait to ask a question. And they don't have to wonder, "Did I get that right or not?" The data is right there for them, and they see right on the screen, not only what do I need to work on, but they also see their accomplishments. And I think seeing their accomplishments is a motivator right there, because they're seeing their own growth.
My thoughts were, holy moly, this is a lot more advanced than the last thing that I used, the last program that I used. And you get to pick more things. You get to watch videos and learn about it. I do it at home sometimes when I don't have anything to do, or when I'm just bored and want to learn some stuff. Like, I do a lot of sports, so whenever those are canceled, I'm usually playing with my little brother, or yeah, doing iXL or something.
I think iXL is a good program, but when teachers recommend skills, I hope that, like, after you reach a certain amount of a score, a smart score, it's able to, like, be deleted instead of staying there the whole time.
I think they have a lot of helpful resources. Like, if something that gets recommended to me I've never seen in my life, there's good videos, and I feel like I've learned a lot from stuff like that that it offers.
It's also nice because it says at the top, it's like, "Watch a video," and most people don't normally want to watch the video because it has, like, it's really long. But if you, like, take the time and, like, you're, like, getting, like, stuff wrong on, like, the lesson, if you, like, watch those videos, it can, like, really help, like, improve, like, what percent you want to, like, be at, so you, like, understand it.
So, in the diagnostic, I really like how it gives you something you don't know yet, and it, like, tests if you know it or not, and then it gives you recommendations to help you. So, we have this thing in iXL called Diagnostic Arena, and you start at the beginning of the year to find your score. And then, as you do more recommendations and keep diagnosing, it increases your score. So, at the beginning of the year, I had 840, which is eighth grade, for four weeks. So, the first number is the grade level, and the second number is how many weeks you've been at that grade. And now, I'm at 1260, which means 12th grade for six weeks. So, I've grown 420 points.
I've been doing a lot of things higher than my grade level, and I've grown 330 points since the beginning of the school year.
I've been doing a lot of things higher than my grade level, and I've grown three hundred thirty points since the beginning of the school year, which would be three grades.
So for my math one, my fractions are eight hundred. They're maxed out for this strand, so I can't go any further than that. And then my algebra and algebra thinking is seven hundred. My numbers and operations is eight seventy. My geometry level is seven hundred forty. My measurement is six eighty. My data and statistics and probability is six hundred eighty. And my overall math level is seven forty. And at the beginning of the school year, it was three hundred eighty.
And I started at seven eighty, and now I'm at twelve hundred. I grew on four hundred twenty points.
I do think it's helpful, like the diagnostic, to just see where like you're at and like how you can improve on like the stuff. And I think it definitely is like really helpful to see that.
So we'd like to thank you for approving the I X L contract, which you did a couple of meetings ago because to quote our Tracy scholar, holy moly, it was such a great product this year. We are going to expand it now. We were in grades three through ten. We're going to expand down to grades one and two, and we're going to expand up into certain courses in grades eleven and twelve at some of our academic level and our C I courses. So thank you very much for that approval.
Thank you so much for including the student feedback in that. That was heartwarming, absolutely heartwarming.
I have one question. Is there an expectation as to how much this is used?
So yes and no, right? No, as in, hey, every teacher, you need to use this for X minutes per day, not at all. An expectation though, that the tool is proven. It's proven, and when I say proven, it's not just in district with sort of anecdotal data. This correlates with our map data, it correlates with our P S S A increases. So the hard data coming from the district checks out the national norms, which of course I X L has done very well with. Also check out, in other words, millions of tests over hundreds of thousands of students. So the bottom line is, you know, in the sense of, hey, teachers, this is a proven tool. We really want you to use this. Then it comes down to each building's admin to say, hey, here's what we really want to see. And they've done a great job structuring conversations across grade level teams and departmental teams to say, hey, talk with your neighbors, tell me what your plan is. What are you thinking about how we can systematize this across your grade level, across your department? So we do want to get it as consistent as possible within the bands. But we are specifically refraining from, hey, we want to see this much time. We've done that in certain cases over the course of this past year just because the usage wasn't there. So sometimes, you know, people are nervous about putting a new tool in place. And so again, talking, working, giving P D over the course of a couple of months. And so in a couple of places, we did say, hey, this is the bare minimum expectation. We want to see you use it for ten to fifteen minutes per week. And that's specifically so that the kids can stay active in the diagnostic arena, which of course is a function of the program to show you where they're going and where they're progressing. So I hope that helps clarify. In other words, it's not a sweeping district mandate that everybody uses for a prescribed amount of time, but an expectation that we are using it to its potential within the buildings.
And it's E L A amount?
Yes. And in middle school, we actually have science and social studies. We were piloting science and social studies. In other words, we negotiated with the company to get science and social studies for free this past year. Well, the budget is what it is. We couldn't continue that for everybody. But we also found the teacher feedback for science and social studies was mixed. Middle school really liked science and used it quite a bit. And then there were a couple of the middle school science teachers who were also very fond of it. So what we've done this year is we were able to scrape some pennies from the budget to be able to afford science for middle school and negotiated with the company for us to get social studies for free for middle school. So for this upcoming year, science and social studies for grades six through eight as well.
And it sounds like they can use it at home also, the kids.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And that's where, that's where I almost say most of them use it. But of course, this isn't a tool to supplant the learning that's going on in the classroom, but to supplement the learning in the classroom. So certainly, a lot of teachers use this at home specifically for that reason. There are so many resources built in. If a student doesn't understand or they miss a question, they have three different options to explain it to them or watch a video, et cetera. So yes, homework is where this is found most often.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. The second information item, four point zero two, Year of Tech Overview. Okay, thank you for the opportunity to share the Year of Tech Overview. The year twenty five, twenty six is going to be our Year of Tech. And our goal is to integrate technology into various aspects of learning. By focusing on tech-driven innovations, we aim to equip our teachers with the tools and skills necessary to thrive in a digital world. So this will involve promoting creativity, collaboration, and personalized learning. So on this side, on the right, you'll see a screenshot of our overall plan. Even though it's all written in there, it is adaptable. We will check the evolving needs, students and teachers. And as we notice changes, we can certainly adapt to those. On the left, you'll see the different opportunities aimed at achieving our goal of implementing technology thoughtfully and purposefully. Our objective is to offer a variety of opportunities for teacher to enhance their knowledge of both A I and the diverse tech tools available throughout the district. So here we have the SAMR model framework that's used in education to guide tech integration. There are numerous models out there, but I'm sharing this one due to its widespread recognition as an effective framework. So as we advance our professional development, it's essential that we encourage teachers to utilize technology in a way that genuinely transforms learning. So one of our key objectives is to leverage technology to achieve outcomes that surpass the limitations of traditional pencil and paper methods. So on the bottom level, you'll see substitution and augmentation. Instead of having teachers live there, we want to provide them opportunity and professional development to have them move up and kind of dabble and live more in the modification and redefinition level, which was where the transformation of learning happens. And you can't necessarily do those things in the higher levels with paper and pencil. So as mentioned before, in services, we'll provide opportunities for P D for our teachers on tech. We have a wealth of district resources available to our educators, and professional development on these resources will be ongoing throughout the year, commencing with our first two in-service days. So on August twenty eighth, we will have nationally known speaker Holly Clark, and she will inspire us and emphasize the importance of deepening our understanding of A I and technology as it relates to education. So we're super excited about that. And then October thirteenth is our next district-wide in-service, and that day will allow teachers to self-select sessions. Many of the sessions will be on the different platforms you see there. And our aspiring leader did give a presentation on that day, so I'm not going to spend too much time on that. But if you have questions, let me know. We also have plans for various Title Four and After-School P D. Many of these offerings are directly aligned with the district resources that were outlined in the previous slide. They will be facilitated by our own expert teachers, members of the curriculum team, and also external vendors often come in and give us P D opportunities. Our objective is to provide as many P D opportunities as we can, and those are just some of the ideas that we have. Again, we will adapt as we see the needs and hear from teachers. We have at least one book study, potentially two district-wide planned. And the first one is the A I Infused Classroom, and that is by Holly Clark, the speaker that we will be having. This book offers a variety of innovative ideas that can be immediately integrated into teaching as soon as you read it. So I thought that would be a good choice for teachers. We will also take every possible measure to provide resources and professional development for anyone interested. So I will be having conversations with administrators to see where they need assistance, if I can provide any resources for them, and also be available in a school so that teachers have the opportunity to ask questions or I can share things with them and just be available. Finally, we are pleased to announce the launch of a monthly newsletter. This newsletter will feature information on upcoming professional development sessions. It will highlight teacher showcases, share updates from the I T department, and include engaging polls and questionnaires. And the interactive elements, they aim to uncover any overlooked tech needs or strengths, allowing us to tailor our future professional development offerings more effectively. So this is again, is the recap of our plan. I'm genuinely really excited about this year. I am very optimistic that every teacher will be able to take something new, skill or new knowledge, and use it to leverage their instruction in the classroom and promote that collaboration and personalized learning. I believe we have a robust plan in place to facilitate this growth, and I eagerly anticipate the opportunities that lie ahead to foster increased student growth and achievement. So I think it's gonna be a great year. Questions? Thank you. Thank you, Chris. The final action item, four point, excuse me, information item is four point zero three related to high school early dismissal dates.
Yeah, thank you again. So this is something that we put in place last year. The high school, as you probably remember, the schedule does not permit common planning time for the teachers. And that's teachers even in just one building, let alone across both buildings. So one of the things we wanted to foster for them at the request of their building administrators was exactly that, time to do that. And we ran six early dismissals last year specifically for this purpose, professional development. What is that? What does it look like? It is teachers teaching teachers on various instructional strategies or software platforms. It is cohort discussions from nine through twelve across departments. So they can work on departmental goals, for example, or they can explain their contributions to the building level goals and a number of other things. So the building admin, I think, has been very prescient, recognizing student learning time as a priority. Parent time, you know, to be able to receive students on early dismissal days is also extremely important. So they have whittled down the request from six days to four days and essentially one day per quarter that we would like to run an early dismissal. The students will get two hours early, would get dismissed two hours early. And then the teachers will use those two hours on each one of those four dates that you see there, specifically for professional development time. Doing, deciding on this now is a little bit earlier than we did last year, but specifically for the purpose of making sure that we can put these on people's calendars well in advance so parents and students can prepare.
Thank you. Five point zero one, Instruction and Student Services, questions from the public. Are there any questions related to any of the action items or information items brought forth this evening? Okay. Six point zero one, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the Instruction and Student Services Committee meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those items. Moving on to Personnel Policy Committee, Mr. Brink.
Thank you, President Wenshaw. Item one point zero one, roll call. Mr. O'Connor, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Brink?
Here.
Mr. Kobilka?
Here.
And Mr. Dean is absent.
Item one point zero two, the approval of the agenda. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item two point zero one, the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting minutes of June ninth, twenty twenty five. I'd like to make a motion that we approve those minutes. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have seven items this evening. Item three point zero one, Policy three seventeen, Conduct Disciplinary Procedures, First Reading.
So this is, policy is being revised based on recommendations for legal liability. It's going to reference the Code of Professional Practices and Conduct for Educators, which is a part of the P D sends out. Also highlights the importance of entertaining or ascertaining employee conduct and if it obstructs, disrupts, or interferes with the teaching or learning environment. And then a statement was added to address the responsibility of investigating allegations, as well as it also discusses how the Superintendent's Office and the H R Office are notified from the Pennsylvania Department of Education if a certified educator has a pending arrest indictment or charge. So that's a new feature. That's just reflecting that policy.
Item three point zero two, Policy three seventeen dot one, Educator Misconduct, First Reading.
This one, there were some legal liability revisions that we did, as well as reverting back to the Title Nine terminology that we keep switching back from.
Item three point zero three, Policy three twenty, Freedom of Speech by Employees, First Reading.
There were just some semantic changes from changing it from freedom of speech in non-school settings to freedom of speech by employees for added clarification, you know, regarding total freedom of speech. And detail has been added to the policy to facilitate acknowledgement of freedom of rights of school employees and indication as to when such speech may impact efficiency or constitute a reasonable likelihood of disruption. Any decision of this, obviously, we would have a legal consultation.
Item three point zero four, Policy seven eighteen, Service Animals in Schools, First Reading.
Again, kind of addressing some legal liability things that we have, and then also specifically including permissible questions a school entity may ask regarding individual requesting the use of a service animal and when those inquiries and requests, what we cannot ask as a district. So limits that based on the law. There's also two new sections, reasonable modifications for miniature horses as well as surcharges. And yes, a miniature horse can be a service animal.
Item three point zero five, Policy nine oh three, Public Comment in Board Meetings, First Reading.
This was added verbiage in the guidelines section of the policy to include a statement that all participants must speak in person in accordance with the guidelines that are listed above.
I'd like to make a motion that we move items three point zero one through three point zero five to the board meeting at the end of the month. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item three point zero six, Revised Job Description. There's one job description from locksmith to door technician. I'd like to make a motion to move item three point zero six to the school board meeting at the end of the month. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item three point zero seven, August fourth, twenty twenty five, Personnel Committee Report. At Asbury, we have a resignation of an educational assistant part-time, also a special education assistant autistic support. We have a recommendation for an educational assistant. At Bell Valley, we have a recommendation for a special education assistant autistic support. At Chestnut Hill, we have a recommendation for a special educational assistant autistic support. Also at Chestnut Hill, we have a leave of absence for a C four head custodian. At Tracy, we have recommendations for a special education teacher emotional support. At Walnut Creek, we have a resignation for a special education assistant life skills. We have a change of status for C one head custodian to C two head custodian. At Westlake, we have a resignation of a music teacher. We also have a recommendation for a special education assistant autistic support and a teacher seventh grade English Language Arts temporary professional contract. We have a correction of a sixth grade science teacher, sabbatical. At J S Wilson, we have a resignation of a special education teacher learning support. A teacher seventh grade English Language Arts. We have a recommendation for a special education assistant emotional support. Ridgefield slash Sarah Reed, we have a resignation of a special education teacher emotional support. At McDowell intermediate, we have a resignation of an educational assistant library, also a special education assistant emotional support. We have a recommendation for an educational assistant guidance. We have a change of status for assistant principal secretary to guidance secretary. At McDowell, we have a retirement, a special education assistant life skills. We have a leave of absence for school guidance counselor. We have a resignation of a girls' water polo head coach and a school psychologist. We have a recommendation for first student employment activity monitors to drivers and a driver. We have department chairs for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Athletic supplements for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, and a change of status for an electrician. I'd like to make a motion that we move item three point zero seven to the Cal meeting this evening. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item four point zero one, information items. We have no informational items this evening. Item five point Item 5.01, any questions from the public about an agenda item this evening? Yes.
Mr. Ali, you wanna come up? State your name and which item, please.
Thank you. I appreciate acknowledging my, uh, my inquiry. I'm not going to address the freedom of speech issue. Believe me, that is gonna be done by the courts. But in 903, let me go page by page. The purpose of the, of this particular policy, the public comment in board meetings, proper governance of the district. In other words, are you stating that you have to follow the governance of the district?
We are stating that it needs to be in person for any.
No, the very first, the purpose, the purpose of this policy. All right, responsibility for the proper governance of the district. In other words, both the public officials and the participant who is speaking must be following the governance of the district. That means the law's in the statute. Is that correct? Yeah, I understand, attorney. I'm just clarifying now because in the past, it has not been followed. You have violated the governance of the district. So I want, want to clarify that, please, because this may be brought up in a court of law. All right, in the authority. In the second paragraph, it states matter of concern, official action or deliberation, which are or may be before the board prior to the official action. You have several lawsuits at the present time that you have not, or you have interpreted the sunshine law differently than what other attorneys may define or interpret the law. So what I'm asking you is, do you follow the sunshine law according to this policy? Because the sunshine law is not stated in this particular policy. Right? Just some general comments. On page two of the guidelines, the board requires that public participants be residents or taxpayers of this district or anyone representing a group in the community or school district, any representative of the fir, of the firm eligible to bid on materials or services solicited by the board, any district employee or any district student. Let me ask you, if I'm ill and I send a representative who lives in Mill Creek to speak on my behalf and I give them my presentation and all they're doing is repeating or just stating what I stated in my presentation, is that allowed? Again, I'm asking questions and I'm asking those uncomfortable questions, which I've been asking for the past 10, maybe 12 years. And I would hope that the solicitor and the law firm that the board has appointed would answer some of these questions. Okay, uh, same guidelines. I would ask, as a, as a public participant. Okay. Please reconsider going from three minutes to five minutes for a public comment. Under the, underneath that, all participants must speak in person in accordance with these guidelines. If you're on, say for instance, YouTube, when I called in on June 23rd or I was allowed to participate, isn't that live? That should be put or placed in this particular district policy. The presiding officer and the district solicitor may. Then you have a list, you know, who determines slanderless, obscene? Who defines that? Does it, does it the board? Does it solicitor? Waive these rules with the approval of the board. Are you saying that a majority of the board or unanimous by the board? Again, that's number six. Uh, response. The pur, the purpose, okay, thank you. The purpose of public comment at board meetings is to allow the board to learn the thoughts and public, the thoughts of the public prior to board deliberation and official action. I would question that. The last one, the following information that's under a public comment recorded in the board minutes, the following information regarding public comment is required to appear in the official minutes of each board meeting, the subject of their testimony. I have not seen the latest of the minutes, the published minutes of what I presented, okay? Just for your consideration. Thank you.
All right, any other questions from the public? And item 6.01 adjourned, and I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn. Can I have a second?
Second.
Oh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brink. Moving on to the Finance and Operations Committee meeting. We have 17 items and take different blocks, but 1.01, take roll call first.
Mr. Wintle?
Here.
Mr. Lindner? Ms. Pasquale?
Here.
1.02, approval of the agenda for the Finance Operations Committee meeting. Can I have a motion to approve that?
Some motion made. Second.
Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. 2.01, Finance, I'm sorry. 2.01 is for the approval of the Finance Operations Agenda from June the 9th. Can I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Motion.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, moving forward to the action items. 17 items, we'll take a number of different blocks. 3.01 through 3.04, distributions from the MEF. 3.01 is a Melissa's Fund Distribution, the amount of $500 from the MEF, Mill Creek Education Foundation, to use for pre-K tuition assistance for students enrolled in a Mill Creek Township School District Child Development Program during the 25, 26 school year. 3.02, Child Development Tax Credit, EITC Fund Distribution, the amount of $4,500 from the Mill Creek Education Foundation to use for pre-K tuition assistance for students enrolled in the Mill Creek Township School District Child Development Program during the 25, 26 school year. 3.03 is a PAEITC Fund Distribution, the amount of $14,107 from the Mill Creek Education Foundation for the 25, 26 school year. And 3.04 is a PAEITC STEAM Distribution, the amount of $3,290 from the Mill Creek Education Foundation for the 25, 26 school year. So I'd like to put 3.01 through 3.04 in form of a motion.
Motion.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 She passes. Moving on, take 305 and 306 together. These are donations. 3.05 is a Golden Apple Award, um, award to Shannon Holly at the Westlake Middle School in the amount of $250. 3.06 is an acceptance of the donations to the Present Accountable and Respectful Team at McDowell Intermediate High School. I'd like to take those two in the form of a motion, kind of a motion.
Motion. Second. Sorry, a motion, a motion to move to the regular board meeting? Is that what you're doing?
Yes, all, oh, I'm sorry, thank you. All these will be going to the board meeting at the end of the month. Thank you. So we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. 3.07, Accounts Payroll Report. And it's a payroll report for June the 27th, 2025. The payroll report for July the 11th, 2025. And the Accounts Payable Report. Can I have a motion to accept 3.07 Accounts Payable Report?
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay. 3.08 through 3.11 be another block. And these are preliminary title contracts. 3.08, to approve of the preliminary Title I Services Agreement, Northwest Tri-County Intermediate Unit for the 25, 26 school year, Do you have a motion?
Motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay. I'm sorry, I did separate that, I'm sorry. We'll just take 309, 310 then as a block. So 309 is your approval of the preliminary Title I Service Agreement of the Fort LeBeuf School District for the 25, 26 school year of $2,089.60. And the Title I Services Agreement, preliminary for the Erie City School District for the 25, 26 school year in the amount of $8,442.80. Have a motion for 309 and 310.
Motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, she passes. Yep, yep, one more, sorry. 311 is a preliminary Sarah Reed formal agreement. And that is for Title I Part B Funds for 25, 26, the amount of $19,995. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
And second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay. Okay, 3.12, 3.17 are purchases that were budgeted or required because of the, but required to go through the bidding process. And you all went through co-ops. 3.12 is the e-dynamic learning quote for $9,100. 3.13 is a Rydell Approval of the Football Helmets Quote of $26,494.70. That was in the athletic department budget. And 3.14 is the Stanberry Uniforms LLC Band Uniforms Quote, the amount of $58,319.95. 3.15 is the Wenger Corporation Coral Risers Quote of $86,975.34. 3.16 is the Welder Supply Company Quote for the Welder Supply of, for the manufacturing lab is $68,936.52. And 3.17 is the Apple Quote, a cost of $32,304. Like to take 3.12, 3.7, could I ask for a motion?
Motion.
Get up a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have two questions. The e-dynamic learning, what is it for? This says renewal for high school. What does it do?
I believe this is the MLL Quote. Correct me if I'm wrong. E-dynamic learning, it's for three years.
Yes, this is one of the softwares that are MLT.
I'm sorry, you say for the MLL?
Yeah, for our English language learners.
Okay.
And 317 for the Apple Quote, the B's replacement? Because the number is kind of a lower number, not like a full bulk by four grade.
Great question. We already bought the grade band. This is some special needs and psychologists testing, some of the miscellaneous ones that weren't captured in terms of the total grade band.
Sure if we were that much higher for students.
Growing enrollment.
Excuse me, and by the way, let me, let me recap. This is not for our ELL license, I was thinking of something else. This is virtual business site license. So this is used by some of our McDowell High School courses, our business. It's not specific to ELL.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay. Passes. Moving on to, sorry, our last item, 3.18, Mill Creek Township, this school district versus Cornerstone Technologies. And there's a little bit of background information. That is where we had sold some equipment and the company is in default of paying us technology. So we filed a lawsuit in federal court against Cornerstone Technology and its owner. We obtained a judgment against both parties in the amount of $75,750. We have attempted to contact them to explore the possibility of settling this matter and have inquired about their interests. However, there's been no response. Next step is to have the judgment transferred to Georgia where they are located in order to assess whether we can execute on any property to satisfy the judgment. We perceive we need to retain legal counsel within Georgia. And there is a retainer letter that was attached. There is a resolution that will be going to the Cal this evening for approval, resolved by the Board of School Directors in the Mill Creek Township School District that the retainer agreement attached hereto in retainer payment of $5,000 for the law firm of Prevelin and Horst LLC in the case of Mill Creek Township School District versus Cornerstone Technologies and Bruce Mansour, Docket Number 125 CV 125, United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. And so, again, this is to recoup the $75,750 that he is default of his put a lien on and his property. So we're going through the legal process to reclaim that. Have a motion to accept that.
Motion.
Move that to the Cal, can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, that passes. Okay, we have a couple of, we have one informational item and federal funding title funds. Mr. O'Toole.
Good evening, thank you. I have better news than when I originally put this on. I didn't think we were gonna receive Title II or Title III funding, but since the agenda went live, the federal government has come out and said this year, we are going to receive that funding. So with that said, just for future, I fully expect this year that we're gonna receive our full allocation amounts for all of our federal funding. However, as we move into next fiscal year and start planning, I believe Title II and Title III will be removed. That's about 240 grand, I would say, out of our budget. And Title I, which is the big one, which is closer to, you know, a million eight, still to be determined. I mean, I think time, only time will tell as we're working our way through. But if that is removed, I mean, clearly, we're gonna have to make up the difference on that within our budget through state or local funds. And so I just want to give everybody, really start that discussion today so everybody's informed and we'll continue to have that as we progress through creating the budget for 26, 27 year.
Any questions for Mr. O'Toole on that? Nope, hearing none, okay. Moving on to item 5, 5.01, Questions From the Public. Any questions from the public? Mr. Ali, just come up. I'm at the five minutes. And please state which item you're.
Oh, yes, sure.
Please.
Thank you. On the very last one, 3.18, Mill Creek Township School District versus Cornerstone Technology. According to the sunshine law, the agenda should be transparent so that the public understands what the agenda item or items are. You mentioned something relative to $75,000. Is that equipment? Is that, what is that?
Yeah, I'd mention it is from the technology that we sold, the hardware that was sold.
Okay.
First, we claims it, recycles it, and so on and so forth.
Okay, so you, what I gather and looking at cost containment and various ways of looking at how you're spending your money, who determines $75,000? Patrick, can you speak on that? Patrick, can you speak on that, please?
For IT.
Yeah, thank you. So we took to bid to a couple of companies who sell our technology. We sent a list of the stuff that we wanted to sell. We got a couple bids back. This company came back with a higher bid to recycle our equipment, and so it was the company we went with.
Okay, um, thank you. Seventy-five thousand dollars, and now you're going into court, you're hiring another law firm? Is that correct? Okay, uh, so the, the Knox Law Firm did not want to take care of this issue? In Georgia, okay. So let me get this straight. So you have to now file in Georgia, you have to, there are legal fees, et cetera. Five thousand dollars would cover everything? Or what happens in the legal community is that there's going to be motions? There are going to be issues that, uh, you know, maybe discovery, depositions, et cetera. For seventy-five thousand dollars that was determined, which I would believe uh, in an honest and, and with integrity manner, seventy-five thousand dollars, why don't you give all that technology to a, a local in Erie County? Whether it is, uh, uh, needs for another educational, uh, organization? Why couldn't you donate it?
Yeah, some of the technology that we, we were able to recycle this year were stuff that, that is not really usable from, from any other, uh, it, you know, we had cameras from COVID that we tried to sell separately that nobody would take. We had, um, other devices that, that we have, we tried a different, different ways to, to get them to be sold and we were to even donate them. And there's not a lot of people that want old stuff.
Mr. Aliotta, the, the real direct answer to that is, is according to our board policy, disposal of assets have to be performed in a certain manner. And if they have value associated with it, we're supposed to try to sell, which is according to school code.
Okay, all right, thank you. Right, you answered your phone.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions? Nope, thank you. Moving on for adjournment, 6.01, you have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
You have a second? I'll second that. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, that passes. That concludes our financial operations. Okay, moving on to the committee of the whole this evening, committee of the whole this evening, so. You have a roll call, Mrs.?
Mr. Brink?
Here.
Mr. Dean is absent. Ms. Philbeck? Mr. Kobelka?
Here.
Mr. Lindner? Ms. Nussham?
Here.
Ms. Pasqual? She's here, she just stepped out. Mr. Winchell?
Here.
Ms. Winchell?
Here.
Dr. Kavanaugh?
Present.
Attorney Hering?
Here.
Thank you. 1.02, executive session announcement, two items that were discussed in executive session personnel. And the second was a litigation case, MTSD versus Cornerstone Technology, Inc. And Bruce Mansour, 125 CV125, US District Court, the Western District of Pennsylvania. 1.03, approval of this evening's agenda, can I have approval of this evening's agenda? You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? Motion passes. And 1.04, please join me in a pledge allegiance. Thank you. 1.05, board goals discussion, just as a quick recap during our, um, you know, we, the board did their self-assessment and one of the opportunities for growth and development, uh, came out. So we engaged PSBA in a professional, professional development workshop, work session. Out of that, um, came with the goal, board goal of advocacy. So I'd like to thank Janice Philbeck and Sally Nussham for spearheading this. And Mr. Lindner, you know, your notes, I think, added a lot to their, uh, you know, creation and attached was a document. Again, this is a work in process, this is the first piece. So I want to have a little discussion this evening about, you know, if you review that, uh, we can bring it back at the end of the month on our old business. And if we need to tweak it again, we can do that or take formal action to approve as the board goals. But we really, the board itself, you know, really itself had a goals in the past. We want to really take this initiative and thought the advocacy was, uh, with a lot of things that are happening out there. So I'm going to turn it over to Sally and to Janice to kind of kick off the conversation, you know, how they crafted this and just kind of talk about a few items. And if someone has any ideas, suggestions, what they liked, they didn't like, and just kind of have a few minute discussion around that.
Sure, uh, we met and just summed up different topics that came up, uh, through our retreat, uh, which revolved around supporting the school district in different school-sponsored activities, different district activities. Um, and just being more cognizant about, um, our advocacy being seen, uh, also being, uh, you know, listen, uh, playing a listening role. Um, and then also engaging with our, uh, local, state, uh, US legislators. And, uh, so we came up with just some guidelines based on what came from there. And so the draft is in front of you and we're just wondering what feedback you all have. I have a couple of questions myself, but.
Yeah, I just, you know, I primarily, I talked to Sally and Janice here. We got this on the agenda and just talked about, you know, the takeaway from the professional development was, you know, the advocacy. And I think we always zero in on our elected officials, but we really need to be as board members advocates for all of our stakeholders, right? Family, students, taxpayers, and, uh, so how, how do we expand that? I think a lot of that discussion was around visibility and being involved, you know? So they did come up with a couple of ideas and, again, about us, and, and that was a discussion during a workshop, you know, be going to, um, you know, sporting events, going to like the principal awards, going to performing arts. Uh, you know, we can get exposure to the staff by, you know, being involved in data step back meetings, you know, with John leading. Now, they did clarify that, hey, keep the building administration as a phrase. And, you know, I know Jason and Mike, you attend a lot of ice cream socials and trick or treats and PTAs, you know, being a parent. So, so you can, you know, cover that, you know? So in here, they talk about a number of times, and I don't know if we really want to do that. It's up to the board to stay, but I think there's enough activities out there that we can all approach some different angle and, and things like that for, for the staff. And, you know, uh, you know, graduation, we attend that or retirement, when they do the retirement recognition, some board members go to that, you know? So, um, I think this was a great, great piece. And, you know, like the legislature, late legislators, you know, we talk about the advocacy days, you know, we've had Terry Scatola come here from county council and you got the voting polling stations moved. You know, it's always talk about, you know, reassessment, things like that. But, you know, I thought it was a great idea, like to invite them or someone from their office to come to the budget preview meeting, you know? And Aaron O'Toole does his one or two budget presentations and them come and, and, and listen and partake in that, you know? We can ask and, you know, I think we, if Ryan Bizarro can't come, I'm sure PJ would be happy to come. We have a good relationship with that, you know? And, uh, you know, even the township, we got a good relationship with the township and getting us, you know, vehicles and, and things like that. So anyhow, you saw, I just want to kind of open this up for a discussion and see if that's where we're headed or anything else that we, you know, they missed or we should talk about. And like I said, like to just kind of bring this back and take it for some formal action at some point.
I think it's important for people to realize that, you know, many, most members are already advocates. And just being cognizant of that when we're evaluating ourselves too.
Yeah. The, um, I know it's like the other thing, I think Sally had mentioned too, it's always good under school board remarks, you know? You know, John talks about all the events, John's at all the events, you know, Dr. Kavanaugh. But I think it's good for, you know, if you participate in something that really had, uh, you know, an impact or you thought, you know, you know, sure, that with the board under school board remarks also, you know? It's like, because people do watch the board meetings too, so maybe they didn't attend an event, but because what you're saying, you know, how impactful it was to you, maybe going forward, they can attend more events as well. Okay, I did all the talking so far.
Does anyone have anything else they, they think might, they might want to be included?
I think we covered almost everything that we talked about during that discussion. I think the notes that you have here accurately reflect our discussions. Do we want to have numbers in there?
Yeah, that's one question Sally and Janice had, do we want to put a number in there, like six events or just?
For the total?
Yeah, yeah, per board member.
Is it a goal, is it an informal goal, is it a formal goal, you know? Everyone has different things happening. Do we want the numbers in there? Should we take the numbers out?
I like the numbers in there. Makes you think about what you're actually going to do to reach that number.
Yeah, there, I think, you know, asking each representative to two might be a lot. We can just get them to try to make a commitment, try to stop in or at least, you know, I know John interacts with them at the IU five a lot. Maybe you can plant the seed when you're out there, John, that, you know, I'll be reaching out or someone will be reaching out to him. We've all got good relationships with them, you know? Senator Law, there's a lot of topics out there, you know, cyber reform is big right now, you know? And, uh, you know, the other thing is too, that we started was, uh, you know, the P, PSBA, you know, initiatives by the letters and that, you know, asking you to go on the PSBA site to, to sign off on those, so they send it to, to them. And so I think when they can see that all the board members are doing that on a consistent basis, and we can get that across IU five, you know? I think that's, that's impactful too.
Yeah, we had talked about them coming to board meetings and Janice is the one that suggested the budget meeting, which I think is a fabulous idea because it really shows how the funding or their lack of affects us as a district and what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
So I think that is a really good idea. And then a lot of these things we vote on for the funding for, the money for it. And it's nice to see what the theaters like, what the sports, you know? And, and, and most of our, or if not all of us do that anyways, but I think it's a good idea to more, be more visible.
Okay, so, you know, Wade talked about the numbers in there is, you know, smart goal, I guess, how much of what by when? But, uh, what's the other thoughts by the other board members?
I think the numbers make sense because it gives you an idea of what the expectation is, you know? I mean, maybe you'll hit that number, maybe you won't hit that number, but that's the expectation.
Yeah, and everyone attends different things, you know, I like going to the sporting events, you know, and other ones like going to the plays. And there's other, I know if you like to attend the data step back meetings. And, uh, I think the more visible we can be with all the stakeholders, I think that's powerful too as a board because we are the eyes and ears of the community. We do hear a lot, you know, so.
And, and don't forget Pi Day, which is the event of the biggest club at the high school, that would be the math club.
So you got, you had that covered, right? You got that covered? You got that covered, okay.
I think this is a good start.
Yeah.
I think that, you know, from a board perspective, you know, having a goal. But I don't think we stop here. I think we continue to workshop. I think that we should try to, within the, you know, with force the next year, get to three total goals for the board.
I see.
I mean, where they are, I don't know at this point, but I think that this is our, our starting point.
Mm-hmm.
We should have this be a continuation.
Well, I know based on a self-assessment, we probably already had more discussion of advocacy than we had in the last three or four years. So we've already moved the needle, like hopefully people recognize that, you know?
And I think this document that you two ladies have put together has made me think about the fact that maybe if I were to fill that form out now today, I would fill it out in a different way based on the examples that you've used, you know? I think it's, it's made all of us think about what exactly does advocacy mean?
You know, the, the, Janice and Sally did ask a good question, I think, you know, something to think about, you know? The question was, would, PSBA, if you remember during that, where they had those name tags, right? Those pins, you know, does it make sense that board members have that? Not that I'm going to wear one to a basketball game or football game, but say we attend a symposium or something with other community members uh, you know, other school districts or things like that, does that make sense to have something identify us as a Mill Creek School? Like I'm thinking about the box symposium, you know, where you've got all kind of different municipality leaders and elected officials there, something like that.
I like the idea of name tags because it sparks conversation. And as so, someone that is often a plus one at different functions, it's so nice to have a name tag because people will talk to me if I have one on, and if they don't, I'm just another face that's in the crowd. So, or whatever that's worth.
It's available if you'd like to use it, of course, some areas would want to use it, but other areas I could see where it can be unofficial, so people would recognize you. I know John does a great job, Dr. Kavanaugh does a great job when a board member say, hi, I'm, I'm going to attend this function. Between Dr. Kavanaugh and the administrators, they always recognize them. As I would suspect as you walk in a lot of gatherings, you all know who they are, you know? So I think it's good to, to do that and you get a lot of discussions afterwards. Hey, Kobelka, Swelling, Wade, any comments?
No, I mean, I always enjoy talking to various politicians and I, you know, interact with them through my work and such, so.
Yeah, you're working, you're working hard at Dairy Club Picnic, I saw that.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, I'm saying, that's another function, you know, that people recognize us, you know, if you had a name tag. Not that, again, you said, but a lot of different badges, you know?
So you're not talking.
The embroidered shirt.
So you're not talking about, you're saying that the, um, name tag that we get through the district is not.
Well, that's a badge, I don't know.
So you're thinking more of like, uh?
I'm just throwing it out there, like, you know, you, you have the nameplate with the little magnet in the back, you slap it on.
The conversation came up at the retreat, I think, about the name tags and they, all three of them are wearing.
The PSBA?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because we were talking to someone, you, I guarantee you go up to someone, talk to, oh, how you doing? Then immediately they go look down at your name tags, they don't know who you are, you're in Bulgaria, you know what, you know?
It sparks conversation. I think the name tags are a good idea as well.
Yeah. So. Yeah, so why don't, why don't over the next week or so, you just, if you have any other things to tweak this basic line and you can bring it back in the old business and then decide to, uh, take formal action with any recommendations, that's it. Sounds good. We're okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you for that discussion. Moving on, item two, 2.01, visitors. If it is a visitor, like to speak. Mr. Aliotta, three minutes. Please announce your, we have your address on record, so please announce your name and your topic on the agenda you'd like to talk about.
Well, good evening, Lou Aliotta. And my topics are violations of law policies, uh, grand jury investigations. Let me repeat myself from the special board meeting of July 17th with some changes. You have observed in the media, the corruption and the deception and now criminal charges may be filed of, uh, right after the grand jury investigation, uh, for the violations of law, which has been exposed for the past eight years in DC and other public entities. Interesting, isn't it? Has every school board director read the written deposition transcripts of those who have been deposed in the federal complaint which I filed in June of 2023? There's much information in these depositions and you are entitled to see it and read it. Have you as school board directors and public officials asked the basic question? Is what we are approving with taxpayer money legal? What is going on in DC as to the investigation and the, the notification today of a grand jury, um, uh, which is going to be seated very soon? Of the violations of law by public officials and attorneys? Which is very possible, those who violated may be charged with criminal statutes for the illegal actions within the past eight years. Can that happen to anyone who participated in any type of coercion by force or threats or just by knowing what they did was illegal? All school board directors should be aware, each one of you and any other public officials, that, uh, you can be charged. Why hasn't the president, a board president, board directors, superintendent not initiated an outside? an outside investigation of the illegal actions from November two thousand and seventeen to the present time? It was very easy to investigate Aliotta in two thousand and sixteen and into two thousand and seventeen, not once, but twice in less than six months, which revealed nothing but trumped up charges which wasted taxpayer money. Any school board director asked how much money the district has spent, expended in the Aliotta illegal litigation?
That's right.
Thank you. I appreciate, and thank you for the opportunity to exercise my and your freedom of speech.
Thank you. Any other visitors like to speak? No? Okay, moving on. Item three, superintendents.
Item three point zero one, we're asking the board approval for the McGraw-Hill World History and Geography Contract Extension that came through instructions to the Services Committee meeting today.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? Motion passes.
Thank you. This will help us get it in the hands of teachers before the year begins. We appreciate that. Item three point zero two, asking for approval of the August fourth, twenty twenty-five personnel report that came through committee earlier this evening.
And I have a motion to approve three point zero two.
Motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? Motion passes. Like, moving on to item four, solicitors' report.
Yes, item four point zero one, we're asking for the approval of the following resolution resolved by the Board of School Directors of the Mill Creek Township School District that the retainer agreement attached here too, and the retainer payment of five thousand dollars for the law firm of Crevelin and Horst LLC, in the case of Mill Creek Township School District versus Cornerstone Technologies, Inc., and Bruce Mansour, docket number one two five dash CB dash one two five, United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania are approved. We're looking for a motion.
Can I have a motion for that recommendation from the citizens?
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, question. Um, we have a default judgment against this corporation right now?
That's correct. You have a default judgment based on the case that was filed in Pennsylvania.
Is it possible to have like a constable or the sheriff's office in Georgia go to the, to the business? Because I've been involved in that before in the Commonwealth here, where you're able to go in and, and take something. And I was just looking them up, and they've got mixed reviews, but it looks like they run a storefront where they resell, like refurbished computers and such. I just wonder if we just showed up with a truck and said, we need seventy-five thousand dollars worth of merchandise and drove away versus a law firm, because the guys had judgments against them already, and I, I just, I just don't know if we can act on it or not, like.
In order to collect on a judgment, it has to be filed in the state where that, that person or company is located.
Okay.
And so, we have to file the judgment in Georgia, which is why we're recommending local council to do so. Once the judgment is recognized in the state of Georgia, then yes, we can take action to collect on it. But the first step is getting the default judgment recognized in the state of Georgia.
And it's not very likely, and I know we're going to have like a five thousand dollar retainer, but is it likely that we could get a law firm down there to take this on a contingency basis where they would take a third of our, of our thing? That way, we really wouldn't be out unless we collect, or probably not.
It's, I, I don't think it's likely, particularly because this company has some history. But, you know, given, given the history and given the size of the default judgment, this was our recommendation. We did look at different options, but this was our recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Just can't walk away. Sorry.
If this was in Ohio, in Youngstown, I would just send a couple of guys over on the violin case and it'd be over.
I would, I would not want to know about that.
Okay, so we had motion second. Discussing any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? Thank you. Item five, old business. Any old business? Any none? Item six, any new business? New business? Any new business? And then move on. Remarks, Northwest Tri-County Intermediate Unit, the last meeting's top agenda or top director's report was attached. So, just a couple of items out of the state. PA houses passes, PA house passes cyber charter reform again. So, going to the Senate now. So, they're looking to cap cyber charter tuition at eight thousand dollars. Said that it also established a statewide formula for special education tuition that would save school districts an estimated six hundred and sixteen million dollars a year through the House analysis of the bill's fiscal impact. That article is attached to that. Also, again, severe teacher shortage has plagued most Pennsylvania counties. The report saying, we're like to, you know, thank Dr. Yablonski. How do we stand, Joe, for this year? For teachers?
With the teachers specifically?
Yeah.
Um, we're doing okay. Um, we have had some last minute resignations. Um, so we're working to fill those.
Typical in August, I would suspect.
Yeah, yeah, but we're doing okay.
How many positions did we have and how many did you fill so far?
Uh, we filled, I think, thirty-six or thirty-six, I believe.
Retirements and?
Retirements, resignations. Saw a lot of people moving out of state, a lot, and then quite a few people staying home.
So, let me ask you a question, just for the listening audience. So, the typical opening we have in the elementary schools for a teacher, how many applications you typically get for those?
Uh, we'll get anywhere from, we've had fifty to seventy-five, twenty-five, seventy-five, depending on. The more specialized positions, we have a little bit more difficulty finding applicants. Some of the more high needs, special ed classrooms, we could, you know, we have smaller pool numbers, if you will, but we've been able to hire. It's just keeping up with the level of resignations that we've been having this time of year. Um, and that's, you know, not unique to Mill Creek Township School District. That's kind of unique to school systems. Kind of, you know, the old adage, when, when the school buses start running, everybody realizes they have to register for kindergarten. Kind of like when school buses start running, everybody's like, oh, maybe I might want to change.
Yeah, I got you. So, okay, thanks. Just wanted for clarification. I know that we always talk about teacher shortages, but I think we're, we're doing a good job trying to stay ahead of the game there. The last item is Pennsylvania announced nearly eight million dollars in grants to expand apprenticeship programs to address those teacher shortages. So, I think a lot of you have heard about the apprentices and interns, district should be able to utilize to get students in there to start the process. That's it. Like I said, all those articles plus many other federal ones, articles are attached. Moving on, seven point zero two, Erie County Technical School. Mr. Lindner?
I don't have a report. We haven't yet since last year. Our next meeting is coming up, but I'm going to defer to John because there is a positive news coming up.
So, I will share very positive news. I mentioned previously that we had some students. And so, we had three students from Erie County Technical School that earned national recognition at the Skills USA National Leadership Conference. So, previously I mentioned that they qualified to get there, and then this news is outstanding. So, in June twenty-fourth to twenty-seventh in Atlanta, Georgia, the team of Kendra Ramey, who's McDowell class of two thousand and twenty-five, Will Bundy, who's McDowell class of two thousand and twenty-six, and Avita Pushjack, who's the Seneca class of two thousand and twenty-seven. After winning the regional championships in February and the state championship in April, they brought home the bronze in the career pathway showcase for human services nationally. So, coming in third place in the entire nation is an outstanding accomplishment for those three young women. So, congratulations to them.
Fantastic. Hey, moving on, seven point zero three, school board remarks. Any school board remarks?
I was just wondering if this might be a good place for Janice and Sally to, perhaps if we worked it into the schedule, we'd be more sure to cover it at every board meeting. You know, just as you've listed the Tri-County Intermediate Unit and the tech school, would it make sense to have the advocacy committee report out at that time, rather than each of us individually saying, I did this and I went here and I went there? We just sent them to you and you did a summation of the kinds of things that we advocated for.
That's fine by me. What are, what are other thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, it'd be kind of like Parks and Rec where they report it each month. Yeah.
Right.
Dr. Kavanaugh, you have any issues with that?
No, no, no. I think it's a wonderful idea.
What's that?
I think that's a wonderful idea.
And you want that at the cow or at the, at the board?
Or would it be the two ladies?
Because we have the other ones, the PSBA and some of the other ones at the end of the month, you know? Probably the cow. I think these are, I know that Northwest and we did that because of the timing, because we always had the meeting in the same week as the cow. So, maybe we put that at the cow to divide that up. How's that?
So, if people would just send those to us, and then if anyone wants to speak in particular about what they attended, that would be good too.
Might need a reminder to the first month just to make sure that we.
Just say aye. Go on. Okay, yeah. Any other school board remarks?
I have none. So, my first one's already been taken, so I've already shared that one. My other remark is just to thank you to our custodians and our maintenance crew who have been working tirelessly throughout the summer to make sure the buildings are going to be up and running on time. And there's a lot going on across the district in many different buildings. And in the end, it'll be great to see when we get back that everything will be done on time.
So, you see, see, I didn't want to steal your thunder on this, but can you make a few comments of the student at McDowell gaining national recognition for her AP presentation? Not the AP, but the research project.
Yeah, I was going to save that one for the end of the month, but if you wanted to mention it today.
Stay tuned.
Yeah, it's great news.
It's called a tease, Gary, you know?
It's a teaser. Okay, well.
Join us.
I guess, I guess, I guess I did kind of spoil.
I, I used this one the first time, so I got to go to.
Don't do that then. Well.
I got it on the list.
Any other school board remarks? Okay, with that, adjournment, I'd just like to remind everyone, we will have an executive session will be held immediately following this meeting for the purpose of personnel, for the purpose of the superintendent evaluation. So, with that, eight point zero one, Kevin adjournment, motion. Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any none? All in favor, say aye.